You never go, just do it yourself?
I did.
All right.
I'm just busting your chops.
Oh, okay, no problem.
Truck is too big for driving.
Yes.
Truck's a little large for a driveway.
Good evening. Adequate notice has been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Notice was published on December 13th, 2018, in the local source, the official newspaper for the town of Springfield for the year 2019, and posted in the Annex Building on December 14th, 2018. This term in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and just as well.
May we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Chairman Anthony Fonseca.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Greg Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Stephen Hoxton.
Here.
Ms. Jody Cohen is absent. Mr. Daniel Poltrock.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Cunningham is absent. Mr. David Schnur.
Here.
Ms. Karen Greco is going to be late. And Mr. Jonathan Sagalow.
Here.
Sir, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask for an approval of the minutes of 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any abstentions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I got it.
Thank you. We have a resolution. It's application 2018-17. And that is for Thompson, Tony, and Nigun, Najin, at 497 Mountain Avenue, Block 1801, Lot 1. That was for front yard variance for a fence. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there a roll call, please, Jen?
Vice Chair Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Schnur.
Yes.
Mr. Hoxton.
Hello.
You aren't here? Mr. Poltrock?
Yes.
And Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have one announcement. The application 2019-S-S Pop Realty, 275 Route 22, Block 3903, Lots 3, 4, and 5, is going to be carried until March 19th. This way they won't have to notice.
Just to be clear, the mail notice has been done. They did not publish. That's why they asked to put it off for a month. But they will not have to re-mail notice because the adjournment from tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. We have our first application. This application 2019-3, Arthur Ginsburg, 2 Winfield Way, Block 3512, Lot 7, and that's for a front yard variance for a fence.
Just note that you have another number.
Yes. Jen, note, we have another number that has...
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Greco has entered the meeting at 6:35.
Thank you.
We moved to Springfield about...
Hold on, hold on, I'll have a second. You gotta be sworn in first.
Oh, I see.
That's okay.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Arthur Ginsburg. I live at 2 Winfield Way in Springfield.
Mr. Ginsburg, can I just ask you to try and speak a little more into the microphone? Make sure we get a record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tell us what you're looking for here, sir.
Well, we moved here 44 years ago. And for the past 35 years, we had a fence in our backyard. It ran six feet tall across the back, papering down to four feet to the back of the house. The fence is 35 years old. It's a board-on-board cedar fence, and it started deteriorating. And I figured, well, I'll just replace it with the same fence, because it lasted 35 years. And I went to get a permit, and they told me I needed a variance, because the law states now that a backyard on a corner property is a front yard.
That's true.
I removed, had the fence removed, because it was falling really in bad shape, but I kept the posts, and I figured I'll just replace the fence and keep the posts where they are, which is what I want to do.
What kind of a fence do you want to replace it with?
Board-on-board cedar fence.
Okay. In the past, we've had many, many, many people come before us, looking for basically the same thing that you're looking for. You already had a fence there, and I don't think the board would have any issue if you did exactly what you had done before. I don't think there would be any problem. Is there any questions from the board? Does anybody have anything they want to ask? Is there anybody, or professionals, have any questions?
I actually just have one question that's going to record. How tall is the fence that you want to put there?
It's six feet in the back and four feet along the sides.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this application? Okay. With that being said, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve application, oops, somewhere, it's here somewhere, application 2019-3, Arthur Ginsburg, 2 Winfield Way, Block 3512, Lot 7, for front yard variance fence. Fence is going to be replaced with the same board-on-board fence, with the same prior heights that were there before. Is there a motion to approve? I'll move to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hoxton?
Yes.
Mr. Poltrock?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur?
Yes.
Mr. Sagalow?
Yes.
Ms. Greco?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Roth?
Yes.
And Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Can I make one statement?
Sure.
I'd like to commend Jennifer Law. She was very helpful to me in anything that I needed to do.
Well...
Thank you.
We think kind of highly of her also.
I think all our professionals try to do the best they can for our residents.
She was terrific.
And I would like to say my husband doesn't really compliment that many people.
Okay, okay. Sir? Sir?
When do you want to have the fence put up?
When?
Yes.
As soon as possible.
You can waive right of resolution. You act on your own. Nobody has been here to say anything negatively about the fence, so if you want, we can have that done. This way you can start sooner. All right? Let the record show that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next application is 2019-1, Janice Lopez, 280 South Springfield Avenue, Block 1802, Lot 32, side yard and two front yard variances for an addition.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good. We're gonna have you sworn in.
Are you both gonna testify?
Yes.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter will be the truth?
Yes.
And then please give your name and address.
Janice Lopez, 280 South Springfield Avenue.
Sure, as well. Name.
Kenneth Abrams, Architect, 765 Norman Place, Westfield.
Okay. And do you answer yes to?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Please tell us what you're looking to do. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You're a licensed architect?
Yes.
Can we hear your credentials, please?
Sure. Licensed in New York, New Jersey. Been licensed since 2003. Bachelor's degree from Georgia Institute of Technology, master's degree from Arizona State University.
Have you ever testified before any boards in town here?
Yes. Cranford, Westfield, Scotch Plains, probably here maybe like 12, 13 years ago.
Okay. Is your license in good standing right now?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. So Ms. Lopez is basically looking to, the existing South Springfield Avenue is a ranch house, one-story, and what we're trying to do is basically modernize it, and so she has more space for family and extended family. It's a, as I said, a two-bedroom house that's cramped. It has small rooms, so we're trying to open it up, basically the first floor, and then use the second floor, add a second story on the existing non-conforming footprint, a second story for bedrooms and bathrooms and such. So basically just reworking the house, but not expanding the existing footprint of the house.
So we go straight up?
Exactly. So on, if you're looking directly at the house, to the right side to meet, to meet the setback, we would have to pull it in four and a half inches. On the left side, no, it might be me. On the left side, we would have to pull it in over eight feet, which kind of, we looked at it as, we've got other options in respect to how we could do it by pulling it in, but it just doesn't seem feasible and cost-effective to truly do it by losing that eight feet on the second floor.
The garage is in the back of the house.
Correct. And we're not going over the garage or the breezeway that's there.
So it's strictly over the existing main home itself?
The main part of the house, exactly.
Okay. What are you gonna use for materials for the exterior?
Right now, it's partially brick. We're looking to probably do, there's vinyl on the existing house, but we're looking to just replace it and upgrade everything that's on the house.
So everything's gonna be new, or it's gonna match exactly the way it is now?
Everything is really gonna be new. I mean, there's nothing that's really gonna be matching, because...
If it's all new, it's not gonna...
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we're really maintaining the exterior of the first floor. We're poking some pulls for new windows and such, but everything is really being gutted and started from scratch. It's an old house. It hasn't been touched in...
Very old.
I mean, you can see the garage door is falling apart, and even the garage itself, the previous owners built into the garage. We're gonna take that space out of there, so it can be a full car garage. Just landscaping everything that'll just improve and just kind of blend into whatever is existing in the neighborhood now. We're not trying to make it extreme. We're actually trying to get as much as we can pleasantries to make it functional on the inside, and then just keep it simple on the exterior, so it's nothing flashy, but and it doesn't impede anything in respect to any of the neighbors or anything like that. We're not trying to max out heights or anything like that as well. We're just keeping, again, very simple, and whatever we need, you know, for the two stories, we kind of maintain.
Anybody on the board have any questions? The professionals, do we have any issues with drainage? I mean, there shouldn't be. We're just gonna go straight up.
The drain will be built with footprint.
Correct.
The drainage is ready to pad a couple inches.
Okay. So anybody from the public that would like to be heard about this application, please come forward. They're gonna be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay. And state your name and address for the record.
Well, my name is Judy Rents, 1932 Marriott Avenue, Lancaster, PA. But the house next door to where they're gonna build, 264 South Springfield Avenue, was my mother's, and it's an estate now, so technically I sort of own it. And I would like to see what their plans are for building, because I haven't gotten to the annex, because it's a three-hour ride, so we came in just tonight for this, for the hearing. Is that possible?
I think what you have to show that I have, that's...
Go ahead.
And I guess what my concern is, why I understand the previous owner, all right, well, the previous owners, they were renting that house. That house has been rented for years and years and years. And there is a patio that was built next to the, next to my driveway in the back, and it goes all the way up against the property line. And there was a lot of noise there. There were people that were there before. They had dogs. They didn't clean up. It was, it was, the house was a mess. So I was just wondering what's going on, or what's gonna happen with it.
Well, it sounds to me like your potential neighbor is looking to beautify the residence. She's gonna live there, and hopefully she'll be maintaining it very nicely. It sounds like she's gonna put some money into the property to do that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So I think that shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Now, what is my question? If you're gonna whip it, are you gonna whip in it, or what's gonna happen?
I don't think that that really is appropriate to this actual meeting. Anybody can buy it, do whatever they want with the property.
I was just...
So I don't think that that's, well, I'm just letting you know, I don't think it's really something that we need to address.
Can I just add something? The, where they're going for their side yard setback at your driveway, so your house is still pretty far away from where they're going vertical. That's not performing, it's not almost...
It's seven feet from the property line. From what I understand, it's already over. The house is already over by like a foot and a half or something.
Have you seen the pictures of what they want to do?
So the front is pretty much the same. I'm sorry. Can you just speak up to make sure it gets recorded?
Excuse me. You have to speak into the microphone, because this is recorded.
Okay. I just wanted to know how high the roof line is.
Can you...
I was just curious to see what, you know, what was gonna happen. Now, I was concerned, because then there's nothing I can do about it, but once you build it up, we're not gonna, I'm like, it's gonna be blocked.
Excuse me. Please...
The side is gonna be blocked from the light, and I was just curious to see how high it was going up.
Right. Actually, I do have an image of the two houses together. There is a significant tree on the front of the property, and the division between the two properties is significant enough that with the slope going away from the property, that your property, that there will be no, I don't think there'll be any air, in my experience, or my, I can say this over a meter or more, any impact to air or light effects to your house.
Okay, no. I was just curious. I was just curious. Are you looking to trim any of it?
That's, that's...
This is on...
If it's your tree, then that's your tree.
Or if you wanted to, whatever. Okay. Because I'm willing to, that's all. I only want to see what's going on, and if we can keep in touch, I appreciate that. Is that possible? Okay. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
What are you, uh...
Anybody else from the public would like to be heard? Okay. No further questions from the board of that nature? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve application 2019-1, Janice Lopez, 280 South Springfield Avenue, Block 1802, Lot 32, for a side yard and two front yard variances for an addition. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call?
Mr. Schnur?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Hoxton?
Yes.
Mr. Poltrock?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Greco?
Yes.
Mr. Sagalow?
Yes.
And Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I will offer the same thing to you, if you want to waive right of resolution. It's entirely up to you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. That's fine. Good luck.
I also would like to thank Jen Law. She has just been the most marvelous person. I couldn't have gotten here without her, and I also want to thank...
Jen, you wanna make a speech for the...
I don't know if Sam is still here, and also Bob Herbert, because they've just been like family. Thank you very much.
Hey, hey. Nice to you. Thank you.
You have this meeting on Valentine's Day. Did you say send her a... I said we should have had the meeting on Valentine's.
I know.
Wow.
Well, thank you.
Way to go, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next application is application 2019-2. Is it Fabio or Echo Colehouse? The address is 282 South Springfield Avenue, Block 1802, Lot 51. That's for a front yard variance for an addition.
Good evening, board members.
Yes.
My name is Anthony Catalano.
Hold on, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on a second. I think it was actually changed.
Which one is that?
It's got a dash two.
Oh, I'm looking.
I'm looking.
This is, he took this out.
What, no, no, I'm not.
No, you're not.
But it is, I am.
See what's in this one?
Oh, this is the right one.
Wonderful. You know, the hair...
The, the specific city...
Oh.
Okay. You're gonna be sworn in.
Nobody can read it.
Are you both gonna speak?
I speak, uh, in Spanish. Fabio is, and then with Mike.
You'll both be sworn in.
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we swear in for it? Just go by the mic so we can hear you.
You know what? You could take it off of that if you like. Be easier. There you go.
Just raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Canara Coelho, and my address that I live, or the address for the variance.
I'm sorry?
Do you want to state for the address for the variance, or the address that I live now?
Your home address. Where are you looking?
It's number 3 Bresser Lane in Kennewark, New Jersey.
Okay. Sir?
My name is Fabio Coelho.
Okay. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
And then you have a witness?
My name is Anthony Catalano. I work for South Corvino. I want to mention that South Corvino had a family emergency tonight, and he couldn't make the meeting. He gave me a letter to give to the board members explaining that if they're, he's requesting, if possible, I can do the board meeting. I'm his project designer. I worked on the majority of the project, and I know the project, so I have this letter that I can offer with his signature.
That's it.
We've done a board meeting.
Got him, Roth? If the board hears his credentials and accepts that he has the ability to testify on issues, then suddenly he can be accepted by the board.
Yeah. More than... Mr. Catalano, would you give us your background?
Sure. I've been doing residential for over 20 years. I work with many firms, I've been with South Corvino for over eight years. And again, I've done testimonies as a project designer with South Corvino, based on the majority of work that I've done on the projects. So I've been to board meetings before I accompanied him in testifying on the project.
Well, if you are not here as an architect, then we can allow us.
We have the existing... So we have this existing one-and-a-half-story dwelling, and we have, the front yard is a corner lot, and we have two variances that we're requesting. The left side front, the South Springfield Avenue side, is a 30-foot setback, and we're at 28 foot two. What we're proposing is to build over the perimeter of the building and not exceed any of the other setbacks in the rear. We're gonna keep, we're gonna keep everything over the alignment of the perimeter, and we're gonna obey by the height. And then on the right-hand side, we'd like to do an additional garage, because the garage, the existing garage is outdated. It can't really fit a car in it. So what we're trying to do is, if the house is an outdated house, we're trying to bring it up to date and make it function properly. And what we're proposing to do up on the second floor is to build a master bedroom with additional bedrooms, master bath, and a hallway bath, just to bring the house up to a family of four and more functional. But again, because of the corner lot, we have the two front yards that were in violation, but we would like this, again, built on top of the perimeter and align the second floor with the existing. We're proposing a covered stoop, but we're gonna maintain the existing stoop, and then we would like to carry over a covered porch to the right side of the stoop, to give it a little characteristic.
So regarding the front stoop, or the front steps, right now, that's at 21.4 feet.
Correct.
And you want it to be 18.5, because this is gonna be, you're not physically extending the house. This is just a...
Covered.
A portico over the, the front steps or something?
Yes. To align with the steps that are already there. The steps are in bad condition. They need to be done over. So we thought of just giving the house a characteristic of the front porch with the columns, aesthetically make it look more appealing and character, so...
Second, we're across the entire part of the house?
No, the right side only, towards the garage. So we eliminated the existing garage, because it really doesn't function. You really came up with a problem there. So on the right side of the lot, which is considered a side yard, the rear yard, we have an abundant amount of space to get another garage, and we're within the setbacks there. But we're proposing that one-story garage to function properly to get a car in there. We incorporated the existing garage into a new office, possibly a mudroom pantry, but we did an office there. It was very small. It's 18 feet. You can't get a truck or anything in there, an oversized car.
Because this is a corner lot with two front yards, and we're gonna go two stories, is there a height variance for the, the part on South Springfield Avenue?
We, we're at 30, 30.8, and then 35.
As long as they stay within the 35 foot, they're fine. And they are 30 point something, so they're good.
I think on the front yard on South Springfield, they also need a variance for the back.
Correct. Correct. They actually, I was gonna say that. They need three variances, not two.
Four. Four variances, actually, four.
No, they need one variance on South Springfield, because they have 28.2, they require 30. And they have one variance on Cambridge Terrace. They have 22.3 feet, they require 30 feet. And they need a side yard variance, and they have 6.7 feet, they require 8.
We're after the portico. The existing, the portico is...
Yeah, they're not adding to that. Yeah, they're not changing that.
So your chart is wrong, where it says I need a variance for lot width and lot depth?
Yes. They actually, they need two front yard variances on one side yard variance. Yes, they actually, they need two front yard variances on one side yard variance.
Are you leaving these shorts there and going up?
Yes.
I'm just adding the garage to the...
The garage to the right is new structure. The existing footprint is remaining. We're gonna add to it. We're gonna go out 22 foot six to the south right side on Cambridge. And the, the new garage is gonna be 21 feet in depth.
And as, as we view the picture of the house, this is the last page of your, of the drawings. It doesn't have an actual page number that I see, but this is what we're looking at. We're looking at hardy plank, which is while signing on, on the, on the house. What's the X-ray finish gonna be?
Hardy plank.
All the way around?
Yes.
And then flat stone along the bottom?
Yes.
Is that gonna be all the way around the house or just the front?
South Springfield and Cambridge.
Oh, okay, so soon we come, okay.
Can I ask a question? I'm confused. If it's on your chart, it says your front yard variance is 18.5 feet.
That's the front stoop. I wanted to know that's the stoop.
So on your, so it is now, but it's a roof.
Yeah.
So on your site plan on PL 1.1, the dimension that I guess you don't show on the site plan, that would be 18, 18.5. I brought five to the, to the stairs or to where the both?
To the stoop, to the, yeah, to the columns. And if you, if you need it, I brought 11 by 17 with those dimensions. I wanted to, I noticed that when I was reviewing the drawings and I kinda wanted the board to have that.
Probably should answer that.
That's the front stoop.
Now it makes sense. I don't understand how this, your, on your cover page, it says it was 21.4 and then you're going for variance for 18, so I think now it's clear.
Just a question. What are the width of the new steps you propose this year? I couldn't see that.
She mentioned 8, 3.
Good. Yes, so the, the front yard variance on Cambridge is now going to be 18.5 feet, not 22.3. So you'll be granted an 18.5 foot variance.
So do you have any questions?
Can, can we see that, that, what you made? You want to work?
I think it should be two.
Eight.
Eight two?
There's two sheets.
Eight two and eight three?
Can you just briefly explain what's on the second sheet, just for the record?
It would be sheet PL 1.1 and PL 3.1.
Was it included in the plan set already?
No.
No?
These, these additional sheets have more dimensions.
I think what he's saying is he had it in the internet.
Right.
Yeah, the dimensions for the stoop.
Right, right.
Yeah, the dimensions for the garage.
And the garage's a roll, yeah. Professionals have any questions?
Just on the drainage. So you're adding the garage area on the, on the side of the house. There's no topo given. Generally, where will the extra roof drain, drain through? To the front yard, to the backyard, or how does the grading work?
I believe you can go out to the front yard because you want to go over to the other side of the property to just the front and front, which that's how you do the house.
And the old driveway is being removed?
Yes.
And planted?
Yes. We will block it down and then replace the landscaping with grass and landscape. We're gonna need to navigate the front of the new garage.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I have one question.
Sure.
The, I just wanna clarify on your amended dimensions on your side yard. Did you amend from, you had existing 6.7 and then proposed 8? I believe the plans show that it's still 6.7.
I changed that on that. It's 11.10, I believe, because we're not, we're not building, we're, we're going back to the existing rear. And that rear, which has a dimension, is at 11 foot 11 inches. So the 6.7 is existing nonconforming.
Yeah.
And, but we're going back to the existing house, the rear.
You're scaling back the bedroom that you have, the existing bedroom there?
No, the existing bedroom, that's on a...
On the, on the eastern side, the northeast corner.
Yeah, that's remaining, that's the first.
That's our 6.7 measure.
Yeah, that's the point, the 6.7.
So it's staying 6.7?
I'm sorry?
So it's staying 6.7?
Yes.
Okay, so 6.7, you have the request there.
Yes.
So I just wanna clarify to the board, the variances that are being requested, just so we have them all on the record.
Please.
There are two pre-existing non-conformities. One for lot width, where 600 feet is required and 127.88 is remaining.
It's not 600.
Is it 600?
It's not 600.
60.
It's 60.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I used, that's what's on the website.
Yeah.
I, I didn't think.
So, so no, no variances required, no pre-existing nonconforming existed. For lot depth, though, it's 100 feet, whereas 60.69 exists.
I'm sorry, just, just to be clear. If the 600 becomes 60, then the required width and depth, they, they flop boxes, so it's really, the depth is 100 feet. And it'll, it'll be 127.88 and then 60 and for the lot width and 60.69. So I don't think they need variances under either one of those.
Yeah, I think you're right, those...
Because under the definition of width, lot width and lot...
Because the ordinance defines the front yard as the smaller dimension of the two yards and therefore the front yard along South Springfield Avenue is actually the official front yard. So that will be the property width.
Okay.
All right, and the property depth will be the one along Cambridge Terrace, which is 125 feet.
Right. So just a little... Right, so there's neither a lot width or a lot depth variance.
Correct, so there's no pre-existing nonconforming exists at the reference of the application number five to be able to so they have a building permit. The, the front yard, these are the variances that are being required, not pre-existing nonconforming, variances for the conditions that are proposed. Front yard, there's 30 feet required, 28.2, no change, and therefore variance is required. For the other front yard, that was the front yard along, along South Springfield. This one is the front yard along Cambridge Terrace, where 30 feet is required, 21.4 exists, and 18.5 is proposed, there are variances required. The side yard, 8 feet is required and as discussed, 6.7 feet exists and is remaining and there are variances required. Three variances are being requested for approval by the board.
Thank you.
Can I just make a point? The 6.7 that's being approved is a pre-existing. The second floor is gonna be way back past the eight feet. 6.7.
The, the question for both is no matter what, you still base it on the longest distance from the setback.
Right.
And whether the length exists, and that's 6.7.
If they are moving the second floor in, so they have more than the eight feet, I don't believe they need a variance for that.
It's a pre, it's only can call it pre-existing.
Yes, pre-existing, no conformant, nonconformant, because they're not, I thought the second floor actually went, including that, all the way to the edge of the house. But if they're moving the house in so that we have more than eight feet, no variance is required.
So two variances, one pre-existing, one conformant.
So no siding?
We're certain there?
Yeah.
We went back and forth because first they wanted to go over to the end, so we had 6.7 in the second floor, but they changed.
Okay, all right, that's fine. So it's two rounds.
As long as you guys are...
We have, I think we have written.
That's fine.
I just want it on the record, it's impossible if you can put a band wire.
Right, understood, thank you. Are there any other questions?
They asked something about the materials?
Yes, yes. Hardy plank front, Hardy plank house with flat stone on the Cambridge side of, side of the home and on the South Springfield side of the home, correct?
With AZAC trim.
Pardon?
With AZAC trim with the Hardy plank.
Okay. Anybody else have any further questions? Is there...
I do have one other thing. You have an office on your plan? That's just like a library? You're not going to be seeing clients? It's, it's a place for you to work at home? It's not an off, okay.
Not the office in the sense of people coming to your home or you conducting actual business?
Not the library office.
Computer room.
Just for the record, is the first time we have twelve years of problems with public control of the city?
Twelve, twelve years, I've never seen one, so.
Jen got four accolades on that.
Day's not over.
Is, is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard regarding this Okay. All right, let's move forward. So I think we can ask for a motion to approve application 2019 dash two, Fabio, Fabio Colho, 282 South Springfield Avenue, block 1802, lot 51. This is for two variances with a pre-existing, nonconforming, already in existence variance, right?
Or pre-existing nonconforming, we can legally interpret it.
Okay, but it's been there and it's not changing, okay? You're gonna revise the plans to show the proper dimensions and so forth? What else am I missing? Is that it? We've entered into records. The other pieces would show the dimensions that we're missing. Okay, so with all that being said, is there a motion to approve the variances? So a second.
Second.
And we have a roll call.
Mr. Schnur?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Poltrak?
Yes.
Ms. Greco?
Yes.
Mr. Sagalow?
Yes.
And Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good luck.
Thank you, board.
We'll make a statement for you if you want to waive your regular resolution. You can do that. There's nobody here that's challenged the application. What you do, act at your own risk. If you'd like to do that, you can. You just let them know.
You're gonna wait?
It's fine.
No, it's a month.
It's thirty, yes, next, next month's meeting, so it's 30 days approximately. Pardon? Okay, so it's fine. Good luck.
All right, thank you so much, board. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Our next application, this application 2019 dash four, Dr. Sally Alkemey, 420 Morris Avenue, block 110, lot 1. This is a preliminary and final site plan, use variance and bump variance for an x-ray
Good evening, members of the Board of Adjustment. I'm Joe Castor from Kramer Burns, representing the applicant. I'm sorry. Good evening, Joe Castor from Kramer Burns, representing the applicant. I plan on presenting in the form of direct testimony, so is there a way I can get a microphone for Ms. Alkemey?
Use the one right there. Maybe you want, might want to sit over there.
So, Mr. Berg.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth? Please state your full name and address.
My name is Sally Alkemey. I'm a resident of Calhoun, Old Bridge.
Okay, thank you. And just for the members of the board, this application is a use variance for the operation of an x-ray technician's school and a pre-existing use variance for the current off-street parking lot that exists at the office building. There's no building anticipated. It's strictly a question of the sort of allowances of the ozone as this would be an undefined use per the ozone. So, Dr. Alkemey, are you the director of Glimmer's Smile Dental Academy?
Yes.
Okay, and what is your profession?
Yeah.
And where did you go to school?
In Wyoming.
And where is your office?
At West Warren Avenue, Abbeville.
Yeah, how long have you been practicing dentist in the township?
Almost 18 years.
And what's the purpose of the school you're proposing to establish?
Dental and radiological. Because we are gonna graduate students that can do dental experience and can work in the office. It's early part of mine.
And why did you decide to start the school?
Every time I get a candidate, like someone comes to work for me, they have a big disconnect with me, whatever it was, and when they come to my office, so I have to frame them basically from the beginning. So I decided I have to do something for that. Maybe I can start a school that's gonna teach them something based on real operation, they see operation as a whole.
And where's the space that you propose to start the school?
Basically, in my office and I work with another small space for the lecture and the lab is in the office.
And do you plan on installing any signage in connection with the school?
No.
And where will both students and staff for the school park?
On the same part of the lot that we own in the office.
And were there any approvals required from the state for this school beyond this variance application?
Actually, I have to, we have three approvals from Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Work and Labor Force, and Department of Division.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
I got a full approval from Department of Environmental Protection on the final process for the Work and Labor Force and Department of Division.
And so the state's evaluated the facilities?
Yes, they, they were in for five, you know, and the student.
And the state's evaluated the radiological equipment as well? And who will teach the x-ray classes?
It will be a different instructor for the lab and the lecture and Alkemey will require a report of clinical part.
Okay, and how long is the course?
It's four months, three months lecture and lab, and then one month for the clinical patients.
And how many students will you have in the class?
The maximum will be 16.
Sorry, 16?
And is that for the, and is that for the school for, say, a semester or is it for an instructional period?
No, that's for a whole semester program. The instructional period will be like four, two sessions, four in the morning, four in the afternoon, and then we'll have another day, four in the morning and four in the afternoon. So it's gonna be 16 all at the same time.
Right. And you mentioned clinical rotations before. Could you describe clinical rotations and what they consist of?
Basically, they will operate on actual patients, so it will be day-to-day, whatever we're doing every day, they will come to the office and they will do everything as it's my assistant. So I have usually two assistants. I will have two students come who help me do everything, x-ray, everything. So then basically, they will see everything, day-to-day vision in a real model.
And, and so would you require the same amount of staff on a clinical rotation day that you would usually have on a day where the dental office is open?
For a substantial relation, I'm not gonna, my two assistants, I'll have to do off-site, they'll be standing there, and that's a month for them to do that. So I will basically, I will have my husband, my two assistants, and I'll have two students. So they will replace my two assistants.
And where would these clinical rotations take place?
At the office, in my office.
And is there anything in particular that distinguishes this program from other available x-ray technician's programs?
It's a procedure. Most of the programs, almost a year, have, or whatever it is, they will take for any other program at the same time, it's in a real, the office, so they will see day-to-day operation in a real office.
And you, you mentioned that you'll be leading the clinical rotations. Do you have any experience in education?
Yeah, I'm a student, I'm a student, I'm a student. Yes, I'm a doctor, I'm a doctor, I'm a dentist, only one day, one day.
Okay, and do you have a proposed hours of operation?
Yeah, Monday, that's normal, like half an hour, which is from nine to six. Tuesday, I'm off to the clinic, and then Wednesday, back to the office, and Thursday, the actual, the office. And that's when the lab and the lecture will take place. And then Friday, I go to seven to two, entire day opens from nine to two.
And with the Board's permission, I have a proposed schedule of operations, including staffing, if you would like to see that.
Yeah, I think we need to have an answer.
I'm gonna mark this as A1.
And Ms. Alkemey, do you have any knowledge of any issues with your parking lot?
Yes.
And have you or your staff ever received any complaints about the parking? And I guess, just in summary, these students, once they complete your program, would they be qualified to work in any dental office in the state?
Yes, that's amazing.
And what's the cost of attendance of your program?
It's like, oh, nine thousand.
And does that include licensing with the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And what is the, in your experience as a person who employs people in this field, what is the approximate salary that they could expect to earn?
Only three thousand, I think.
And are there, how do you determine who's qualified for your program? What are the requirements for a student?
Basically, I'm following the Environmental Protection, very light. We have eighteen years of age, and we have to have high school diploma or diploma, and we have to have a good moral character. The question is, do they have to leave?
All right. Unless the Board has any other questions, I bring my planner.
I have some questions. I'm confused when you're talking about my office, the off- like, I don't know which place you're talking about. When are people going to be at four twenty and when are people going to be at the other space?
Oh, four twenty, four twenty, yes. The address that they said in the beginning, that's what happened, still they said it.
Okay.
Yeah, excuse me. So, the dental office exists in four twenty Morris Avenue. It's a multi-office building, and so the applicants have operated their dental office in this space for seven years, and they've rented additional space within the same building that's an adjacent room to the office space.
So, you're in that building already, you're not talking about two different buildings, different-
Yeah, it's an additional space within the same building.
Okay.
I'm confused.
Go ahead.
The, the, the sort of the density you have there between your staff and, you know, who are typically in an office on a, on a dentistry desk?
Two assistants, one front, me and usually I see three patients an hour.
Okay, so, so there's two assistants, there's somebody working reception, you, and three patients.
Yes.
So, from nine to seven, Monday and Tuesday, just going off your schedule right now, how many people at a given time would you say are in this parking lot? How many cars?
How many cars? We also have plenty of space, actually. We never got a problem with the parking, with what I say, like, I have two assistants who park over there, me, the receptionist, so it's four, and then three patients, so it's seven.
Okay.
Yeah, our professionals wrote a couple of letters addressing a number of issues, and one of the biggest issues is parking. I don't know if it's Marcy Street, Marcy Avenue, but it's only permit parking. The parking lot as it exists now is not, is, the parking requirements today versus what you currently have are two different things, if I'm not mistaken, isn't that correct?
The configuration, it wouldn't meet today's standards for twenty-four-foot aisle and exact striping and nine-by-eighteen, but the number of stalls is, would be in compliance. One of my questions is, the applicant gave in the application several breakdowns of the doctor's office, of the accounting office, of the dentist's office, of the proposed school area. I wanted to confirm the total square footage of the building, because then we can get an accurate-
Yeah.
Parking requirements for the building versus the individual use.
Yeah, I think that that's important to know.
I have a professional planner who's gonna testify next if, and I think he can address these concerns.
Hold on, I have a question.
Oh.
Regarding the school itself, all right, is this considered a vocational school? What, is that what this is?
Yes.
And this is an accredited school?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Certainly.
So, I have to have a question, is this is a use that is very unique to something that you're looking to do, or have you known other vendors in your, in your realm that have done something similar to this?
No, I don't know any other vendors. That's why it feels like my whole community.
Okay. And you've already mentioned that it's offered at vocational schools. It's also offered at technical colleges in the area as well?
Yeah, yeah, it's just like theoretical.
Okay.
What you have, you know.
Okay. Is there a set curriculum set by the state, or are you creating?
Yes.
Okay. And what do, when students graduate from your program, they walk away with a license, a certificate?
They have to, who give the test first, then once they pass, they apply for the license, they will get the license.
Okay.
That's how they will be able to do it.
And the tests are like a boards or something, like, okay. And then my last two questions are related to the actual office. Are the, the space that you leased, is it physically connected to yours, or is it just within the same building?
It's the same building, but I have just like a back door connected to that.
Oh, so they're connected?
Yeah.
Okay. And are you aware if the, if the building has any other vacancies or any other open space?
I just want to know.
Okay.
Why is it that your program is only four months when other programs, I think you said, were approximately one year? How does yours, how do you accomplish everything in four months, still keep the accreditation, et cetera?
You become focusing on the X-ray, which is amazing. At the same time, I'll give them the dental experience by working in a real law office. So, doesn't have, they have, you don't have to imagine like what's gonna happen after they graduate, how they work at a law office just by reading the books the whole year. Basically, the other program, really like from looking, basically, every month, they have like a chapter to read from, so.
So, does that mean if somebody went to a program that was a year, that they would learn more?
No, not, no. My program will be better. With my program in a real law office, so they will really see everything, day-to-day. They come from these programs, my office, and I have to teach them again everything, so.
I'm confused. If the normal program is an hour, I mean, is it a year, how do you get it done in four months? Do they, they're only coming once or twice a week? Is that the normal protocol?
For radiology, for the radiologic technology? Yes. Well, as a medical department, yes, but yes. For that, for radiologic technology?
I have a follow-up question that maybe will clarify this. The program that you are, and the timeframe that you are proposing to the state, I'm assuming you need to get approval from them, is it an approved timeline to meet that curriculum? Okay.
Competency and everything.
Thank you.
Does the state mandate the maximum number of students that could be in the program?
They didn't mandate, but they approved me for an actual number of fifteen based on like the size of the office.
And you have on here, you put this together? Okay, so, number of available student slots in this projection exceeds max capacity of school?
Yeah, that means for the semester, I'm sorry if that's unclear. I meant that the number of available spaces here in this schedule is greater than sixteen, and so it wouldn't be that there are two students in each set because there's more than sixteen available sets and there's only possibly sixteen students that would attend the school. I apologize for any confusion that caused. So, like, let's say that Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, were all filled, then there'd be no students on Saturday.
And do you anticipate any reason why you have, you had originally two assistants, a receptionist, yourself, and then the three patients on these days when the school, when, in the clinical rotation days? Do you anticipate any reason why you'd have to have, why this plan wouldn't work? In other words, you might need additional assistants that are, that are already fully trained, or?
So, the current plan is both to reduce the number of patients, so currently the doctor might see three patients in a given hour with their current staff, but during the month of clinical rotations, they'd be seeing one patient in the hour, and the students are essentially acting as like an intern. It's similar to clinical rotations that would happen in a medical school or physician's assistant program where the students are operating as assistants to the doctor. So, not only that they can learn how things are going, but also assist the doctor.
I have one additional question.
Sure.
In relation to the program. For the clinical portion, dental assistants perform more than just X-rays. Sometimes they do cleanings, you know. Are you training them for that, in that capacity as well, or just for the X-rays?
No, they're like, they're just for training, they're waiting for a rule or cleaning for a bill, patient, they can do that.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Do they do any other, will these, will these interns be performing any other duties other than X-ray technician?
Just helping me, that's what they need.
Okay. And they're cert, but their certifications are related strict, when they walk out and pass their boards, it's strictly related to X-ray technician?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate on how they're gonna assist you?
Yes.
For the suction, preparing the rooms for come doing the filling, we have with all the like stuff for my filling. That's basically like-
Where have they been trained to learn how to do this?
They will learn dental tools before they come to the lab.
Is that not mandated by the Board in New Jersey?
Not mandated by the Board, but what?
Ah, the dental assistant, assistant street, and is there any training that they'd have to go through prior to ensure that they're handling the instruments properly and they're sanitized or, and whatnot?
They will learn that in the three months prior to the clinical part. They're not gonna come to me, they don't know anything. They will learn that in the three months.
Okay, now, now I'm not wrapping my head around this too well. So, somebody wants to take your program. They've graduated high school, college is not a career path for them. They wanna come and they wanna take your program. So, your program is gonna be four months, and they're gonna learn how to do X-ray technician stuff, work. While they're doing this, who's teaching them about suction and utensils and sterilizing them, et cetera?
The instructor, if a dentist is-
But I thought the school was to teach somebody how to learn how to do X-rays?
In the dental field, they have to do both, and we only one.
You didn't state that, though. I'm sorry, you didn't.
Okay, so, I'm speaking to that right now. It's, in the dental field, they have to do both. But they don't have to be trained to do like the actual dental, so if anyone can assist a dentist, but nobody can take an X-ray.
Anybody can? I can walk into dentist's office and stick out your tongue and do something?
Legally, yes.
So, it's interesting, I didn't realize that.
Yep, legally, yeah, but they can't operate an X-ray. That's why nobody will hire them if they don't know how to do the X-ray and they don't have the license to have the X-ray. Without the X-ray license, they can't work at a law office. But anybody can just hold suction, prepare a room, clean a room.
I just looked this up, actually. Ah, yeah, so, what you're saying is they are UDAs or unregistered dental assistants until after you pass the board, and after that, they become a registered dental assistant, which is only really in radiation, but also is now privy to the information you'd learn in the clinical.
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Chairman, I have a question, and you probably went over it, but I think you missed it. The number of students and instructors for the classroom portion, you stated in the application that would be occurring when the dental office is closed?
Yes.
Is that correct? How many students and staff would be at any one session or one time would be in the building?
Would be the instructor and the four students.
Four students only at one time?
Any other questions right now?
Just the regular, just the regular schedule you have currently is you are closed on Wednesdays and Thursdays, right?
Yeah.
And that remains the same? And the other things that are in the building again? There's an accounting office, there's another-
There's a doctor, yeah. So, they are not prepared over time, they are not-
And then I'd like to present Rob Larson to testify as to the parking and aspects of the planning and architecture. As long as the Board has no further questions for Dr. Alkemey?
No, not at the moment.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear a form to tell the truth?
I do.
And state your name in the record.
Sure, Robert Larson, L.A.R.S.E.N.
And address, please, your business and address.
Sure, ninety-five Madawan Road, Madawan, New Jersey.
Will you tell us about your qualifications, please?
Sure. I'm a licensed planner and licensed architect here in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from NJIT with a Bachelor's of Architecture. I've held that license for fourteen years. I have a planner's license for the past eight years. I've practiced as a planner and architect with the firm of Chester Plissis Sosaski for the past over twenty years. I've testified in front of many boards in both capacities. It's my first time in front of this zoning board, I've been in front of your planning board here in Springfield several times.
Is your license in effect right now?
It is.
Okay. We'll accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. And so, Mr. Larson, what are the materials you've reviewed in this application?
Sure. I, no problem.
Review the survey, which is prepared by-
Excuse me.
ordinances, master plan, as well as the application materials. I visited the site myself, walked around inside and out, and that is what I have to provide.
And what are the allowed uses in the ozone in the township?
Okay, so, I believe the permitted uses within the office zone are simple bedroom dwellings, office buildings, private schools, churches, and other places of worship, municipal buildings, public schools, parks, like, and other public, quasi-public uses, child care centers, and medical offices.
And what are the requirements for a use variance?
So, if I, I'm just gonna step out and get back in front of the hall. So, I believe there was a question as to whether or not this is a defined use within the ozone in being a school. Obviously, the private schools are permitted, public schools are permitted, and also your planner mentioned that it might be used because it's an additional use to the others that are onsite. As I've already conceded, there is a doctor's office and accountant existing that's operating now. So, we're asking for a D-variance. As I said, it is a D1, whether I guess we consider it, it is a use that is not defined- As I said, it is a view one, whether I guess we consider it, it is a use that is not defined or specifically permitted, or it's a combination of uses in the school. So, the, what I'm required to offer to you, as I'm sure you're quite familiar, is that the positive criteria are met as well as the negative criteria for variance. We have offered in our application materials, and I think it's true that this school offers an inherently beneficial use. I'm gonna actually take a moment to kind of just talk about my understanding, perhaps is to help, how this all works, at the point of what is this a direct survey? But, in my opinion, having worked with Dr. Alkumari, spent some time with him, to hear about this, it seems like it's an excellent opportunity for schooling for kids to find another way to get a practical, real job, getting a good salary and appropriate medical support. It is unique in a way, but one that seems to be practically needed within other dentist offices.
Thanks. Whoa. I'll talk a little further away. And, okay, so, again, in terms of, I do, I do feel that this meets the definition of an inherently beneficial school, beneficial use as a school. Again, it will bring value to this, to Springfield, to this area, to offer an opportunity for, again, young people to find a career that will pay well and is an affordable education. In terms of, besides being inherently beneficial use, right, this certainly is taking advantage of a space that's already in operation. It's going to bring just a more vibrant use to the space on the close days. As an architect, I have to tell you, when I do hire people, and when myself, when I got out of college, I got my first job, I had no idea what I was doing. So, and I find that for the young people to come out. So, it was refreshing to hear Dr. Alkumari say, it's nice to teach someone at the point of use. I wish they offered that, maybe a certificate program for architects. That said, I'm not sure if the board can see, but this, what I'm gonna point to here is a survey of lot one, block one-ten, noted as one of one. I believe it's part of the application package, it is the survey, again, prepared by my office. Again, if I may, this lower box, general portion of the building, is occupied by an accountant. This middle portion here is occupied by the other doctor, and the dental office takes up all but the back of this wing of the building currently. Although it is attached to and directly accessible by the existing dentist, my client here has acquired that space and leased as well. So again, it's all connected, it's all within the same structure, and to be very clear, we're changing nothing. This is about use within the building. In terms of negative criteria, so I would offer to you that, besides the inherently beneficial use that I've offered, as well as the benefits to the area, I also have to offer you that there is not a negative impact. I will go further into the parking, but in terms of negative impact, I have considered, would this have a negative impact on the public good, right? In my opinion, no. This is already acting and has been acting as a dentist office, we have people coming and going without incident for many years. It's been operating quite well, from my understanding and the research that we've done. The parking is sufficient, in fact, the parking, which again, I'll go into in a little bit greater detail, in terms of number of spaces, is more than sufficient as calculated, and I, hopefully, we can discuss this a bit further with your professionals to agree. In terms of an impact on your zone plan, I have reviewed the master plan and I see no negative impact on your master plan. The, this commercial use on Morris Avenue is gonna see a bit more of a vibrant use. It's gonna keep people in here five, six days a week. Also, in terms of your zoning ordinance, I see no negative impact. This ozone already does picture schools being present. So in fact, notwithstanding the definition of this type of school, I do believe that there would be no negative, negative impact on your zoning ordinance. So that said, in terms of the balance, I do feel that considering the positives and the lack of negatives, that the positives certainly do outweigh the lack of negatives. And if I may, I have some numbers for the board. I've also, by the way, reviewed the board's professionals' letters from Harvard Consultants and Keller and Kirkpatrick. The breakdown of the spaces, again, being an architect, I did some estimations on where I saw the demising was, and I'm comfortable with the numbers I'm about to offer you. The accountant's office is approximately eight hundred and twenty-one square feet. His requirement would be one space per two hundred and fifty square feet, requiring four. The doctor's office is eight hundred and twenty-nine square feet. His requirement for parking is one per two hundred, requiring five. And the existing dental office is about just under thirteen hundred square feet. Again, applying one per two hundred square feet, we need seven. That is a total correctly noted by your planner as sixteen. We had incorrectly rounded to fourteen. So, applying and agreeing with the numbers in your professionals' report, this existing combination of uses, renters within this space would require sixteen. We have nineteen, right? So notwithstanding, as was mentioned, they are not in conformance with the current standards, they do exist, and when we do count nineteen, we are excluding one that's, happens to sit within the right-of-way of Morris Avenue. So there's an additional space that is paved, however, we are not taking, we're asking for credit for that. So there's actually a, a three-space overage in terms of the parking that would be required as the current tenants. In terms of this particular parking lot, again, it's in place, there's a small piece that's out here in the front, I apologize for the feedback, that's accessed directly off of Morris Avenue, and then this other lot, which is accessed off of Marcy Avenue. People, again, have been coming and going from this parking lot with a combination of uses without incident. We did take an opportunity to request police records. It was actually one of the first conversations we had, was to make sure that there was not a problem known. So there, one hit did come back because of a, I believe, an error in the, the address called out, there was an accident in a parking lot. And this address, four-twenty, I believe is the number, was combined with a second address on the report, and I do have an exhibit to offer, just for, to clarify, to make the board comfortable, hopefully, with the safe operation of the existing parking lot.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, so you're saying that the accident did not occur on that, on the property in question?
That's correct.
Okay.
There was, when we got the report back, four-twenty was noted as the location. I believe a second address was also noted, and a diagram was drawn.
There is a diagram, and I was gonna ask you if you could actually describe to us what happened based on this limited diagram.
Well, I don't know that I can go into exactly what happened.
Well, not, I know what happened, but if you-
But it looks like somebody backed into another parked car, and I'm hoping the board can see what I saw, again, as a professional, that will clarify that this is in fact not, did not occur on the subject site. As you can see, so, should I mark this as A1?
Yes. No, A2.
A2?
More curious as to where it happened and what happened. I got the gist of the word.
Okay, so I've just noted that as exhibit A2, I have myself prepared at my office. On the left of it, titled "Existing Aerial," is a, you know, I have handouts of this? That be beneficial?
Sure. If you have them, is it the same picture?
It's the exact same picture.
To illustrate the issue that we saw to the board, on the first page of the record, the police database has it listed as four-twenty Morris Ave, but if you look on the actual police report, the address that the officer listed was four-thirty-eight Morris Avenue.
And this, the purpose of this part of my presentation is to hopefully give you comfort with the safe operation of the existing parking lot. So, if you were to look at the police report diagram, it has a few key elements. It shows two roads, I believe this is Morris and Marcy. You will see a box with some spaces into it, and another box behind it with some perpendicular spaces into it, right? Very rectilinear. If you look directly across Marcy Avenue, you would see that there is a, a business here, that's a box, it has some parking into it. Behind it is another box and a few spaces into it. In my professional opinion, if there was to be a discrepancy, it would appear that this accident happened in the parking lot just across on the other corner. When comparing this diagram, the proximity of our uses and the layout of these buildings and parking. So, just to clear up, whatever perhaps discrepancy there may have been in the police records versus where this accident actually happened, it appears to have happened across the street from the subject property.
You're saying the address happened at four-twenty or four-thirty-eight?
I believe the report says four-thirty-eight, but the police database has four-twenty, so...
Four-thirty-six is the address. Four-thirty-six is the address of the barber shop.
So they didn't get any addresses, right?
Again, suspenders in a belt, we just wanted to be sure to bring this topic to you so that we could show that, to our client's knowledge, to the police reports that we were able to obtain, there seems to have been, have been no incident. People, I guess, patients and like that do come and go, and once these students start coming, they will certainly be coming on a regular basis, they'll be comfortable with their environment, I believe. So that said, we would ask the board to consider the parking variances that are already pre-existing in terms of size, and as was mentioned by your professional, the drive-by width, the drive-alits and sizes do not meet your current standards, but it has existed, it is pre-existing, and it is being used by these uses. Also, in terms of, just to add a little bit to the, to the use of the spaces, as Dr. Alkumari testified, they're currently using, so the, the space requires seven, it seems that they're using seven when they're operating fully. When the school is open, I believe there will be four students and an instructor, but we had gone one more, just to be sure that we would consider it at its full operation if the doctor came, or we just wanted to add a little bit of a contingency, so we said that there would be six at any one time. So considering not during the clinical rotation, we use seven during the regular business day, six would be used at the school, strictly school day. And as was testified, the seven that were currently being used are, the students that come during the clinical rotation will replace two that will not be there. So, in all this, hopefully giving the board some surety that the parking is to be sufficient and safe for hopefully future students coming to this space.
And you did acknowledge the width issue, twenty-four?
Yes, so, the, I did a full analysis of every parking space and every drive aisle, so they vary, right? So they are not nine by eighteen, which I think is your current standard, and they do not have twenty-four-foot drive outlets, but this is, we're not restriping, we're not changing any aspect of this site at all, we're just asking that this additional use be on off out, or on off days, and also obviously used during the clinical trial, so...
Have you done any traffic studies and examples at different times, how many empty spots there are in the lot throughout the week?
No, other than to ask my client, you know, has she experienced, has anybody ever complained and said, hey, I can't find a spot, or this was a problem, or, we have not done any traffic studies.
Yeah, the only other question I have along those lines, too, is this portion, right here?
Mm-hmm.
Is that closer to what we're talking about? Like, who uses this part of the parking lot more often than not?
I can tell you that the school, so, first part of the question?
Uh-huh.
The school is actually entered from back here.
From the back.
So that the students likely would be parking in the back. Myself, as a witness, I cannot testify to the regular user of this front lot, but the account, just having been there practically, the accountant's front door is here, and the doctor's front door is here. So it's more likely that they're, the patrons of those two uses are going here.
Right.
To address that specific area, it appears that there's a parking space that's pretty much right in front of someone's front door. I'm not certain as to whether it's the doctor or the CPAs, but is that actually considered a spot? If you'd like, you can come over here and I'll point out to you.
Sure. Gently put this.
If I'm not mistaken, this is a parking, they're considering this in that parking space, and there's a doorway going into someone's office. Now, if someone parks their car there, it really kinda takes away from the door, the doorway. So are you actually including this as an actual parking space?
I drew myself a little diagram to count the nineteen. So yes, it is counted among the nineteen that we claim to have, and again, it's one that is less likely used by this user, but I guess to offer, this is also three over what the building would require as well.
Okay, where's the spot that is in the right-of-way? I want this to be pointed out to me.
So if you were on, if you were looking at my survey, and you would see along Morris Avenue, the number four-four-three-zero, so forty-four-point-three-zero feet, that we are not counting, because it has a piece of it that goes out to the right-of-way.
All right. You know, I'm gonna be a little bit of a stickler. If someone parked, and I don't think it really matters who they're going to visit, they pull in and they park in this, that spot that I was referring to by the front door, and they park in there with a large vehicle because they think that this is a big spot, they're possibly blocking the entry. How can we have that as a, as a spot? I don't think you can use that.
Okay. Well, then, I'd be happy to offer that there are eighteen usable spaces on the site.
Okay. The next question also is, I've only seen one handicap spot, I don't know what the ordinance is, how many handicap spots there should be?
Well, if you, I don't want to comment, or you can comment.
You can, you can comment.
Sure. And again, I would certainly defer to your professionals' opinion as well, but considering this is a parking lot that was built, I'm not quite sure what standards were applicable. This likely does not meet the count for current standard.
I think that that is a hundred percent right, and I think that's an issue.
Okay. Well, we were, again, we're asking to use it the way it is.
What is the, is there, is there a limit?
I believe that the counts would be fine with one, with one per twenty-five, however, you would require the van accessible space, which is the eight-foot aisle and the eight-foot stall, stall, oh, and that's its sixteen feet you'd need for a handicap. You know, in essence, sixteen feet for the stall and the aisle for the, for the van accessible aisle. So obviously, it doesn't meet that. In addition, on the same topic, there's, it doesn't meet twenty-four feet, the two-way aisles are one-way width, coming in and out of the rear lots. In addition, there's particularly the parking stalls, particularly by the front door, and even the handicap stalls- the handicap stall, although it's not in the ordinance, there's not adequate backup turning areas to make that K-turn to back up and leave the lot. You usually need at least a five-foot area so you can back your car up and get, get that out. And that situation occurs not only in the front parking lot, but it also occurs in two locations and two rear lots where, yeah, the vehicle really doesn't have the adequate room to back up and try and get their vehicle pointing back out, you know, really doing some difficult move now. With that being said, they are doing it today, but it clearly doesn't meet the standards for standard parking, dimensional parking, and for regular passengers navigating a parking lot.
In the back on the Marcy Avenue side, there's a spot that's, when you pull in, it's to the left rear. Is that a double spot?
Like a tandem spot?
Yeah.
It's, all I can say is it's called out as one space, and I believe only one car parks in it. It's just the way they striped it is super long.
I'm asking a question.
Sure. It is not intended to be a tandem space, it just seems to be striped extra long.
You know, I really think that you're coming here asking to add a use to this existing property. And frankly, I think the parking situation needs to be addressed. I don't, the parking doesn't really seem to be adequate the way it is right now, and with the change in occupancy going on and going forward, I think it could be a real issue, and that something needs to be done about it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, our position would be that the occupancy on a given day would remain consistent with the current use of the dental office.
Well, the current dental office is the current dental office. Now we're adding a school, and that changes the whole process. And the parking lot seems to be inferior, and I have an issue with that. And I think that there's probably some other people that very well may feel the same way about it.
I understand that.
If that parking lot were set up according to the current guidelines, how many estimated spaces do you think are actually big?
Less?
Yeah.
I think that's definitely a fair answer.
Yeah, the current usage isn't really conforming.
I don't know how you get the handicap vehicle in the handicap spot.
Right. I think they have some opportunities to re-stripe and reconfigure to improve the current situation. What the yield is, I'm not sure what the ultimate yield will be. And I don't think they'll be able to get it in full compliance. Could they improve it? I think so.
Well, is there anyone that could do some quick math?
Well, I think that perhaps they should...
Here's my question. The overall square footage of the building, if we're looking, this, this parking lot does, it serves the whole building. So you've identified individual uses. Is that all, I don't know who's answering who knows the question, can answer, what is the total usable square footage of this building that if other tenants come in, what is the total square footage?
I estimate about 3,700 square feet.
So with this 757 square feet...
That's inclusive of, of the 757.
There is no more available space for any other...
To my knowledge not.
Well, that's, that's my, the root of my question is, there's no more vacant space in the building, okay?
Respectfully to the chairman, I, the applicant is a tenant in the building and does not have...
Sir, I understand she's an applicant, she's a tenant, but she's looking to do something in addition to, not in lieu of. And I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned for people that go there and possibly people in the neighborhood. I have to take that into consideration. So I think, I think you have to re-figure your parking and perhaps come back to us.
So shall we adjourn this application for a following session, give a consultation with our...
I'm going to give you an opportunity to come back here, otherwise we can continue, and I don't know what that outcome will be.
I know, can I add something? It'd be great if somebody was to do some kind of study about when the spots are empty, how many spots, what time is the day, and how, you know, are there, so we can have a little more information about, I know that the tenant said that there's empty spots, but it'd be nice if we had a professional that could actually do some kind of traffic study and explain, you know, how the lot is being used, and we could have some documentation.
Sure. And if I may just ask a question, because we'll certainly go take a look, is, would it be the board's pleasure to know, could we make everything into full compliance, or could we come improve certain specific situations to bring it into greater compliance?
I'd also like to know how many spots you're actually going to have if you were in full compliance.
Especially with the handicap and how you're going to get somebody in and out of that spot. You'll have to put the handicaps somewhere else.
Increased size of vehicles now versus when they configured the parking lot, all kinds of things like that. SUVs are pretty big these days.
And popular.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, given the comments from the board, I would respectfully request an adjournment so that we can attempt to address some of these concerns and hopefully provide you with an answer at a future session.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Chairman, if we made clear that it's been carried to the, to the March 19th meeting, then they will not have to re-notice. If they won't be ready for that meeting, then we would have to pick a date at another time, maybe.
That's fine, Tom. We want to hold those to next meeting. We're going to hold those to the next meeting. Ma'am, I'm sorry, but it's, we, well, that's, we're not going to take any comments from the, from the public right now. We're not finished with testimony right now. So we're going to hold off on that.
Counsel, just to be clear, it's your request to carry this to the March meeting?
Yes. Um, yes, March 19th, yes.
Okay.
If there's no further questions, then I will...
That's it?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would you like to ask for motion to adjourn? By all means, please do.
Sorry, I just got to give you a couple, couple words. You've probably heard by now that this is going to be my last meeting I'll be attending here with adjustment. Unfortunately, my last day in Springfield is March 14th. I just sad this, you know, that I'm going. I have known some of you for a very, very long time. I know Bruce literally 26 years since I started Springfield. I know Anthony and Greg and Steve and Jennifer and Andrew a long time, so it's sad, but I'm moving on. And I want to thank you for your service. You guys do a great job, and it was a pleasure, real pleasure working with you.
You will be missed. You made it very easy for us. May we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, please.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.